Good evening. Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. The date is Monday, July 10th, 2023, and the time is 5:00 P.M. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence, please. Madam President, will you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comment shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted. Also, any person designed to address the commission shall file a written request with the city clerk prior to consideration of the matter. The person wishing to speak shall complete a comment card for each agenda item and shall include, that comment card shall include the person's full name and address. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting or your comment card will not be read in. All right, thank you. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll start with item 6.1, a tribute honoring Grassford Smith in recognition of his years of service and commitment to the citizens of Palm Beach County and his installation as president of Palm Beach County Bar Association. Just a few words about Mr. Smith. He is a president-elect of the Palm Beach County Bar Association. He's chair of the American Heart Association of Palm Beach County and chair of the Minority Partners and Majority Law Firm's Division of the National Bar Association. He is a nationally recognized commercial litigator and advisor, and he's a litigation partner, litigation practice group leader in the West Palm Beach office of Acreman. Mr. Smith has admitted to practice law in Florida, New York, Washington, D.C., and the United States Supreme Court. Mr. Smith was previously an equity shareholder with a regional law firm in Florida, becoming its first African-American shareholder in its approximately 100-year history, and he is listed in the Best Lawyers in America and is A.V. Preeminent Rated by Martin Del Hubbell and has received numerous other honors. He's received his Bachelor of Science from Florida State University College of Business, his Juris Doctor from New York University School of Law, and an Executive Education Certificate from Harvard University Kennedy School of Government and a Business Strategy Certificate from Cornell University. He was installed as the 101st president of the Palm Beach County Bar Association on June 3rd, 2023, becoming the association's third African-American president. And so I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby pay tribute to Grassford Smith in recognition of his years of service and commitment to the citizens of Palm Beach County and his installation as president of the Palm Beach County Bar Association. Congratulations, Mr. Smith. Congratulations. You want to say a few words?
Yeah, I will.
You're a lawyer.
Yeah. I know you all heard that. Good evening. First of all, I just want to thank the mayor for not only his service to this community, but also just for his friendship, which I'm very grateful. I know just about everyone on the dais, and I know that you all are committed to the citizens of West Palm Beach and Palm Beach County in general. I am honored, as you've been heard, you've heard before, to be the new president of the Palm Beach County Bar, and we are going to be focused on not only community service for our Palm Beach County Bar residents, but also quality of life issues in general. So I've already spoken to Mayor James about his expertise with housing issues and how we could utilize that within the Palm Beach County Bar, so I'm looking forward to opportunities that we'll have to collaborate, which I believe will start as early as August. So again, thank you for this honor. Thank you to residents and look forward to more opportunities to collaborate. Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Appreciate it.
Now, I would like to present a proclamation proclaiming July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month. Parks and Recreation programming enhance our quality of life by contributing to healthy lifestyles, building community, creating economic development, and encouraging environmental stewardship, and by creating opportunities for people of all ages and cultures to participate in activities and events that encourage health, education, and social interaction. Parks and Recreation programs and events boost the economy, enhance property values, attract new business, increase tourism, and reduce crime. Recreation builds family unity, strengthens neighborhood involvement, offers opportunity for social interaction, enhances education, develops creativity, and promotes cultural diversity, and provides encounters in nature, maintenance of clean air, and the protection of plant and animal wildlife. The parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife, and ensures the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. The U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of West Palm Beach. Here tonight to accept the proclamation is Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation; Mary Pennick, Marketing and Community Events Manager; Todd Snyder, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation; and Sheri Wilson, who is Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of West Palm Beach.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm Leah Rockwell, the Director of Parks and Recreation. So thank you for proclaiming July as National Parks and Recreation Month. I could not be more excited about this year's national theme, Where Communities Grow. For the 65,000-plus visitors who attended Fourth on Flagler this year, some of our members of that team are in the very back row there that made that happen. Community events held by promoters in our city, our weekly events, Holiday in Paradise with Sandy, we can see where community grows. With over 100 vendors at the city's award-winning Green Market, we can see where community grows. For families who enroll their children in our camps and after-school programs currently at capacity, we can see where community grows. For the children and adults who participate in soccer, basketball, flag football, tennis, skateboarding, and our sailing programs, which we offer, we can see where community grows. For our more mature residents who come together for programs and activities at our community centers, we can see where community grows. With thanks to our Public Utilities Department, who oversees the beautiful grassy waters preserve in Apoe Trails, we can see where community grows. So the theme of Where Community Grows is also about the commitment of our Parks and Recreation team, our staff committed to excellence, learning and growing to ensure we continue to deliver the benefits like health, wellness, and social connection. Beautiful public spaces and places are certainly where community grows, and I thank you all for acknowledging July as National Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you. Before we move on with the agenda, I did want to say a few remarks about the topic that has been in a number of people's minds, and that's our waterfront marina. There's a lot of disinformation that has been spread, and so I wanted to share the facts and timeline of how we got here and where we're going. In June of 2021, June 30th as a matter of fact, the city received an unsolicited proposal to construct docks and boat slips between Palm Harbor Marina and the South Cove Islands, and this proposal was delivered to the city pursuant to Section 255.065 Florida statutes. On August 9th of 2021, the City Commission adopted Resolution 210-21, which provided in pertinent part that the City Commission determined a city marina could constitute a qualifying project pursuant to Section 255.065 Florida statutes in that the project would serve a public purpose as a recreational facility that would be used by the public at large. And that resolution also went on to say we would accept other proposals for the same project. But I want to emphasize the language that was in the resolution which guides the process hereon. It was our finding as a commission that the project would serve a public purpose as a recreational facility that would be used by the public at large. It is not meant to be exclusive and cutting off the waterfront or cutting off access to the waterfront to the general public. And so we did receive two additional proposals prior to October 13th, 2021, and on June 5th of this year, at a special meeting of the City Commission, each of, there were two proposers that presented their vision for the development of a marina, and the City Commissioners, sitting as a selection committee, voted to continue and negotiate with City Harbor LLC for the construction of a $16 million marina. This is the initiation of a rather relatively long process. There will be ample opportunity for the public to weigh in on the specific proposal of City Harbor LLC before a contract is finalized. I will ensure that there will be listening sessions conducted by City Harbor around the city where we'll discuss with the public what its proposal is and give the public an opportunity to weigh in before the contract is signed. But I did want to remind the commissioners as well as the public what the underlying fundamental reason was for accepting these proposals and the principle that is guiding us on this, and I'll read it again, that the project, the marina, would serve a public purpose as a recreational facility that would be used by the public at large. And as we are, before we sign a contract with the City Harbor, we will ensure that it meets those steps. So we are not trying to exclude people from our waterfront. If anything, we are looking to enhance our waterfront and to activate our waterfront so there are activities for the public to enjoy as part of the marina process. So I just wanted to get that out there and dispel some of the disinformation that is there. Hopefully, that will calm and quell some concerns, and as I said, stay tuned for more information about how the public can hear more about the City Harbor proposal and even weigh in because we will, there will be meetings. The commissioners and I cannot attend those meetings because there is a cone of silence, but we will have city staff there and we'll work out all the logistics, but we will be widely publicizing these meetings, and there will be more than one around the city so that the public can hear more about what is being proposed and can ask questions and weigh in, and certainly at the meeting at which we will consider the contract once it is finalized, there will be public comment at that meeting. But even prior to then, the public would have an opportunity to weigh in. All right, so let's proceed now with the balance of the agenda. We are at the consent calendar, items 7.1 through 7.11. Do we have any cards on consent? Okay. Can I get a motion? Any comments on consent?
Mayor, thank you for that clarification. I move that we approve consent agenda submitted.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's go into next part of the meeting. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 135-23 approves as face of the city Chachi's Village Historical Memorial to be installed at Sunset Park, 3601 North Australian Avenue. The title of the memorial will be granted to the city upon completion. The funding of $6,200 will be provided by the Florida Black Historical Research Project, Inc., with matching funds of $6,200 by the Art Life Public Art Account. Sibylle?
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Sibylle Welter, Director of Arts, Culture, and Community Building. So I present Chachi's Village. So the Florida Black Historical Research Project was established in 1996, and they were established to collect and disseminate knowledge of significant contributions blacks have made in the state of Florida. With this, they came to do a memorial at Sunset Park, 3601 North Australian Avenue, which is a city-owned park. The memorial would acknowledge the historical presence of Chachi's Village, a once-thriving 19th-century Native American community. It would also have the intent of a historical marker to reference the area's first people and also the distinction of being one of the first known residents of Palm Beach. It's identified by the Seminole Village Chief Chachi, as you can see in the photo. The memorial would be a plaque, an 18-by-24 cast bronze. This is a draft of the wording, and it would be on a free-form boulder of natural limestone. That was something that was discussed and the committee agreed upon. The specific site within the Sunset Park is to be determined. We know that it needs to be by the water, near a shade and a bench. If it approved, then we will go and proceed to do locates to make sure that where it's put is viable. And then part of this, the memorial comes from a grant. It's called "Telling the Full History of the Laxahatchee River Battlefield." The grant was given to them by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, the National Endowment for the Humanities, as part of the American Rescue Plan. And it was twofold, and I will talk about the duality of it. The second part of the grant was to create a permanent memorial for land acknowledgement. So it was the preservation of a sacred place such as Chachi's Village and specific to West Palm Beach. So it's, the intent is to create a space for this land acknowledgement, to identify and commemorate the history of those lands used by the indigenous Americans in West Palm Beach, and to put that placement of Chachi's Village Memorial in Sunset Park so it enables tourists and residents and educators to visit the site, to bring the legacy and retrieve a narrative of the group of Native Americans who lived in peace and harmony on our waterfront. So the proposed establishment of Chachi's Village Memorial Monument will make an immeasurable contribution to the city's cultural heritage. And if you'll allow me, part of the package that when someone comes with a memorial or monument is that it needs to be relevant to the city of West Palm Beach. And they wrote a really lovely essay on it that brings in the grant that they were given, but I just want to zero in on this one part. "Placement of Chachi's Village Memorial in Sunset Park enables tourists, residents, and educators to visit the site, understand the legacy, and retrieve a narrative of one group of Native Americans who lived in peace and harmony on the waterfront. Since the memorial would lie almost due west of the Dr. Martin Luther King Memorial on Lake Worth, the opportunity exists to promote these as the city's beacons of peace and reconciliation with our past. The two memorials to peace, which could be accessed via 36th Street, offer a view of the sunrise over Dr. Martin Luther King and the sunset over Chachi's Village, and would elevate the image of the city as to its commitment not only to acknowledge those unrepresented in modern American history, but also to pay tribute to peaceful coexistence." And with that, on behalf of the Art Life Committee, it is recommended that we move ahead with City Commission approve Chachi's Memorial at Sunset Park.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, comments, commissioners? I don't think we have any cards. If not, I will entertain a motion. Motions?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 135-23 and Resolution Number 155-23F. This motion is based on the findings that the proposed memorial meets the criteria set forth in Section 78-125 of the City Code as reviewed by the Art Life WPB Committee.
Very good. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.2, Resolution Number 136-23 approves the proposed art concept Sound Ripples by Alexander Arechia for Celeste Palm Station at 520 North Rosemary Avenue by the estate companies to satisfy the public art requirement. 1% of the total construction cost is $600,000.
Hello again. So I'm going to give you context first. So the rendering of the building, seen without the artwork, this is a 325-unit mid-rise multifamily apartment. It's located on North Rosemary, 4th Street, and West Railroad Avenue. Here's the two proposed locations, and you can see it's the louvre of the buildings and the connectors of the two buildings on levels three and four. And here's another view giving you context. So West Railroad Avenue on the west, 4th Street, which will run through now, and North Rosemary Avenue. So there'll be two distinct areas to view the work. The identified artist, Alexander Arechia, is an internationally acclaimed contemporary Cuban artist. He has had, his work goes back two decades, and I, myself and the committee, were pleasantly pleased to find out that he was the identified artist. So his objective was to create a sculpture that evokes music and its influence to the community as an element of identity, and we get a little glimpse of what he is proposing. He's calling it Sound Ripples. This is a massive piece, and this is the view that you're looking at is from North Rosemary. So in North Rosemary, you'll see the three trumpets, and then what he's created with aluminum, is perforated aluminum so that it appears as movement is happening. And here's a better view of it, if you can sort of tell from this diagram. What he's doing is he's creating in different sizing so that it looks like sound is, you know, rippling through the air. He uses an international orange, that is his color that he's known for, and black and white to achieve heightened contrast. And as I said, it's large, it's 59 by 20 by 2. Here you can see how, the impact of the visual from both sides of where it will be installed, and then another visual to give you just how bright and colorful and impactful it will be. And yet another one, the diagram on the bottom is the, how it will attach to the building itself. The breakdown of the 600,000, the 1%. And a final piece for you to look at if you have questions. Again, the Art Life Committee reviewed this under Section 78-125, found that it met all the criteria, and unanimously voted. Recommendation to City Commission.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. I just want to comment that I think it's great that we're infusing music into some of our art and that each of our art, you know, has a different feel and look, and I love that because I think each piece speaks to our residents and visitors in a different way. So thank you for your help and guidance on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I recommend that we approve Resolution Number 136-23. This motion is based on the findings that the proposed artworks meet the criteria set forth in Section 78-125 of the City Code as reviewed by the Art Life West Palm Beach Committee.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9.1, Public Hearing and Third Reading of Ordinance Number 5044-23, amending Chapter 94, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, Section 94-106, Article 7, Special Districts, Section 94-210, Table 7, 9, and Section 94-215, Table 7-17, Article 9, permitted uses, uses permitted with extra requirements and special uses. Section 94-272 and 94-273, and Article 19, Definitions, Section 94-611 and Appendix A, to prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of West Palm Beach.
Good evening, Claudia Babin, City Urban Designer and Planning Division. We have no changes in the second reading for this ordinance.
Very good. Any questions? President Warren?
I've gone back several times and have reviewed the information that was presented as well as information that was presented to DAC on 412 and information that was presented to planning and zoning for 18. And during those meetings, it was very clearly identified through staff that everything that applied to creating this ordinance and these restrictions, excuse me, this resolution, would impact pharmacies. But then when we had the meeting here at the, in the commission, it was discussed that it may not impact pharmacies. Can you tell us definitively, is there an impact on other pharmaceutical type of businesses throughout the city of West Palm Beach?
Yes. So if the city allows the use, any additional requirements for locations will need to apply for pharmacies. But if they do not allow the medical marijuana dispensaries in the city, that is not something that the pharmacist will need to do, meaning the pharmacist will continue to be permitted in the city.
If I may, would you like me to expand upon that, Commissioner? So the statute originally, what was created by the legislature, said that cities, municipalities may prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries across their, citywide, across their city, or if they allow them... Or, if they allow them, then they must treat them the same as pharmacy. By virtue of adopting a regulation that does not allow them, you have no impact upon those existing pharmacies today, or in the future for that matter.
And if laws change and we make the decision to change this resolution moving forward, what would be the process to adjust or amend this?
If you, if new laws, subsequent laws are adopted, and the city wants to create new legislation, and it affects zoning and planning, then the planning department will come through the same process that they do to create an ordinance or change to the zoning code, which is two readings of an ordinance generally. We had three this time because we started with a regulation that would apply both to pharmacies and dispensaries, and then we changed it to a ban, so there was two additional readings, but it will follow your regular process for adoption of an ordinance to change your code.
And that adoption then would first require that the mayor would put that item on as an agenda item for it to come before us to make any changes?
That is one way for an ordinance to come forward, yes.
Any further follow-up? Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Beduzzi?
So as I understand it, if we attempt to regulate as opposed to prohibit, that regulation would also apply to pharmacies and not just to dispensaries?
Correct.
Okay. So I think it's prudent that we move to prohibit now in the absence of a moratorium because it is likely that this referendum that'll be presented to the people of the state of Florida will pass for the recreational use of marijuana. And it is likewise very likely that the dispensaries that are currently licensed to distribute the medical marijuana will also be those facilities that are licensed to distribute recreational marijuana. We already have nine such facilities in our city, and I think if we don't do something now in the form of either a moratorium or an outright prohibition, that we're going to see just a number of other businesses coming in and attempting to set up prior to that statewide referendum. So I think this is the most prudent course of action. I think we can look at it down the road, but I'm not so sure that it's going to need to be looked at because if the referendum passes, then likely the places that are already licensed are going to be places to purchase recreational marijuana as well. Just for clarification, that won't actually require any action of this body. Those places that are already licensed, if the state law changes, will actually be allowed to sell the recreational marijuana as well. Is that correct?
It depends, number one, you're going to have the constitutional question. Once the constitutional question is adopted, then it's either automatically imposed or it provides the state will create legislation that carries it out. So it depends what the state, which is probably the way that it would go. So it depends on what changes the state makes to the statute that regulates medical marijuana to allow for recreational marijuana, what that looks like, what it tells us we have to do or doesn't, don't have to do. So it's a wait-and-see, really.
Mayor, follow-up?
Yes.
So thank you. I mean, so I still think that my opinion hasn't changed, that I think this is the most prudent way for us to act at this time is to go ahead and prohibit it. And down the road after, whether this referendum passes or doesn't, we can always revisit the issue in the future.
President Warren?
So in the event that one of these free-market businesses are successful and they seek to expand their businesses, we would, they would not be allowed to open additional locations, correct? If this moves forward?
If we adopt a regulation that doesn't allow medical marijuana, there will be no additional locations for medical marijuana. What happens in the future as it relates to recreational, we have to wait and see.
Any other questions, comments? We do have one card, Rafael Clemente. Nope, you don't wish to speak? Okay. No other cards, no questions. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 5044-23 on third reading.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All right, let's have the ordinance read. Madam Clerk could read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance Number 5044-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 94, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, Section 94-106, Article 7, Special Districts, Section 94-210, Table 7-9, and Section 94-215, Table 7-17, Article 9, Permitted Uses, Uses permitted with extra requirements and special uses, Section 94-272 and 94-273, and Article 19, Definitions, Section 94-611 and Appendix A, to prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of West Palm Beach, declaring these proposed zoning tax amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning and land development regulations of the city, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have a tie, which means I vote, and I will support the motion. Okay. So motion passes three to two. No, two to, no, three to two. Three to two, I can count. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move now to Item 9.2, Public Hearing of Resolution Number 162-23, authorizing acceptance of federal entitlement grants in the amount of $5,95,720, approving submission of the One-Year Action Plan for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, authorizing execution of all agreements and related documents, approving amendments to the city's annual one-year action plans for fiscal years 2020 through 2023 for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program, for fiscal years 2017 through 2021 for the Home Investment Partnerships Program, or HOM, and for fiscal years 2019 through 2023 for the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, or HOPWA, program, and authorizing submittal of the action plan and amendments to HUD for review and approval.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Kimberly Spence with Housing and Community Development. I'm the Programs Manager. And this evening I will be presenting before you the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Annual Action Plan, which will allow us to accept federal entitlement grants of about $5 million from HUD. Annually, we bring this plan to you, and it covers the three programs, CDBG, HOM, and HOPWA. In addition to the annual action plan, we also are requesting authorization to amend prior year's action plans to reprogram unspent funds for some upcoming projects that we are considering. It also authorizes submission of the plan and the amendments to HUD, and authorizes the mayor to execute all agreements, related documents, and allows for the subrecipients to receive the funding as well. The Fiscal Year 2023-24 Annual Action Plan is a summary of all the activities and projects that we are proposing to utilize the federal funding sources for. As I mentioned, we receive grant funds from three primary sources, CDBG, HOM, and HOPWA. These three funding sources are primarily to benefit low and moderate income residents of the city. This plan will cover fiscal year 2023-24, which will begin October 1, 2023. The next few slides will outline the proposed budget. Under the CDBG program, we anticipate we will receive just over $1 million this year. We are proposing to allocate 15%, which is the maximum that can be set aside for public service activities. So that's about $151,000. That funded will be used for our homelessness services and for other public service activities that are carried out by the city's Community Services Division. Another $657,000 will be used for public facilities and improvements, and the remaining 20% will be used for planning and administration activities of the department, which is about $202,000. Under the HOM program, we expect to receive $532,518, and 100% of this funding will be used for activities that benefit low and moderate income persons, and specifically housing activities such as new construction or rehabilitation. We have budgeted just under $400,000 for new construction and housing development activities. We are allowed to set aside 15% of the award for community housing development organizations, which are a special type of nonprofit organization that can utilize this home funding. So that funding is about $80,000, and the remaining 10% is also for HOM program and administration, which will be retained by the city for oversight of the program. Finally, for the HOPWA budget, we expect to receive $3.5 million, and the reason this funding allocation is so large is this will serve Palm Beach County as a whole. We partner with the Palm Beach County Housing Authority to expend these funds, and they use it for a tenant-based rental assistance program where they assist just over 200 households each year. In this budget, they expect to expend $3.2 million for that tenant-based rental assistance activity, $90,000 on supportive services. They'll use $135,000 for program administration, and $106,000 will be used for the city's administration of these HOPWA funds. The final part of the action plan is a proposed substantial amendment. As I mentioned before, we're going to be sweeping some older funds into the upcoming fiscal year to carry out some additional projects. One of the main projects that we are considering is the, a project that's being proposed by the Palm Beach County Housing Authority through their Development Arm, the Spectral Organization, where they're proposing to do a 48-unit multifamily rental project at their former office site on 45th Street. Right now, we have a conditional commitment of $1.25 million coming from HOM program as well as the HOPWA program for the project, and this is about a $17 million project. The project is currently going through site plan review, but we are engaging in our due diligence as far as the HUD requirements to underwrite a project, to prepare the environmental review, and also to make the funds available in the action plan, which is what we're doing now if this is approved tonight. This is the first time the city will be using HOPWA funding for a project of this nature. Typically, as I mentioned, we use the HOPWA for tenant-based rental assistance. This is the first time we're using it for construction of a facility, in this case rental housing, and it's even rare in the program itself to use this funding this way, but it is allowed as a form of a community residence. What's ahead for the action plan? We did advertise the public notice of the availability of the action plan on June 10. We're required to have a 30-day comment period, which ends tonight. If the plan is approved tonight, we will move forward with submitting the action plan to HUD, and the deadline for that is August 16. HUD has a 45-day review comment period, and upon approval of the plan, the fiscal year will begin on October 1, 2023. So again, staff recommends approval of Resolution 162-23, and I'll be happy to take any questions at this time.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions, comments, commissioners? We have any, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the whole department and staff, Mayor, your administration, for the work that goes into this action plan. And it's, it's great to see these funds being creatively used within our rights to do so, and I'm just grateful for the work that we're doing in the city to help our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I recommend that we approve Resolution Number 162-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, we are entering the quasi-judicial judicial portion of the meeting, so I'll need you to make your disclosures, please. We'll start with Commissioner Beduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. As to Item 10.1, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I requested these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
President Warren?
Mayor, as to Item 10.1, I have not had ex parte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. As to Item 10.1, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
And Commissioner Ward?
As to Item 10.1, I have not had ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
I will make my disclosure in the event I have to vote. As to this matter, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures be made part of the record. And Madam Clerk, can you swear in? All witnesses, please.
Would everyone wishing to speak on Item 10.1 please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Do.
Thank you.
Okay, Item 10.1, Resolution Number 138-23, approving a replat of property to create the Platte the Grand on approximately 2.54 acres, or 110,623 square feet of real property, generally located at 609 Second Street, associated with the Grand multifamily residential project and granting a private underground utility easement under a portion of Second Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening. My name is Meredith. I'm with Hudson Bowen, representing the applicant and owner affiliated development for the Grand. I'm here to present the minor subdivision replat of the property and a private drain easement to go under Second Street. So we're familiar with the project. The Grand is under, is just about ready to open, completed construction. The replating is the last, one of the last steps before being granted their certificate of occupancy. The grant, the plat has been reviewed by your professional staff, and they have worked with the property owner to grant, to work through the wording of a underground easement under Second Street, which is highlighted here in blue on this page. So the property itself is 2.54 acres. There's 309 units. There's some ground floor retail and residential units. And the easement is just a small easement on the, on the, on the south side on Second Street to allow for some underground infrastructure to drain. Your staff has reviewed the application and found it complies with all 12 standards of the zoning and land development regulations and subdivision regulations. And so with that, we would respectfully request your approval of the plat and the underground private drain easement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, staff, what say ye?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Chris Kimmely, Urban Design Planner. The applicant provided a good overview of what the replat is, and staff recommends approval of Resolution 138-23. As the plat is consistent with our comprehensive plan, it complies with the requirements of both Section 94-44 and Section 94-342 of our zoning and land development regulations, as well as Chapter 177 of Florida statutes. If there are any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 138-23. This motion is based upon the applications submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, and the findings that the request complies with all applicable provisions of Chapter 177 Florida statutes, the comprehensive plan, and the standards in Section 94-342 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now turn to comments from the public. I have a number of cards, so I'm going to read out three at a time, so if you could start making your way toward the podium. Gary Roberts, Harriet Janisch, Janisch, and Cat Fox are the first three names.
No, you could read mine.
Okay. Do not wish to speak. This is from Mr. Roberts. What will you tell friends and your own children when the view and access to 4th of July celebration and closer to the, are closer to the public's view and access along Flagler Drive and dock, and dock? Gates are locked. Will this be your legacy as a commissioner, as a city? Okay, it's from Mr. Roberts. Thank you. Harriet Janisch, Cat Fox, and Cheryl Dunn, can position herself. Harriet?
Palm Beach Post Swain Washington has the exposure and timeline on why this public marina proposal and execution stinks of rotten fish. The deliberate attempt to railroad this smelly bill of goods reveals an unsavory and vengeful and repeated strategy of suppressing any public voice, input, or scrutiny until the outcry was too great and the control and censure of opposition constantly escalates. It was obviously obvious early on what was happening here. It is the same game the high-rise developers did with the public representation, only now the medium is water. Greed is a terrible and fearful thing, its consequences irreversible and constant. All you need to do is look at the Minyon Commissioners and related entities's justification for this unwanted and unneeded public marina. Somehow, I don't think the poor children of the area will ever be making use of the 150-foot boat slips, and I don't know about your neighbors, but mine don't have 150-foot boats in need of public marina. Quite honestly, this whole thing of a public marina is ridiculous. Let's call it what it is, a water grab, whose proponents consisted of election campaign financing, boat show owners that don't want to rent portable docks, and developers that hope they are adding panache and accessibility to rich clients. There is also the awaiting disaster of crowding more cars, people, ecological, and wildlife impact, noise, placing, and liability. There is not only nothing needed or good in this expensive and invasive marina enterprise, only regret that cannot be undone. The West Palm Beach waterfront is nationally acclaimed. It's really a park. Why would you destroy one of these last few priceless natural gems that the citizens possesses for a collection of boat spaces that no one wants for 357 days in a 364-day year?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, I ask you to please bring this back to the table and vote against it.
Well, I don't, what am I supposed to do? All I can do is talk. Cat Fox. Cat Fox.
No comment.
Do you want me to read your card? Please, no. Public not informed, aquatic lives. View gone. Bad publicity for West Palm Beach. This could not happen ever. Okay? Cheryl Dunn.
Well, this is about the marina also.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Okay, sorry. Cheryl Dunn, downtown resident. This is about the project that's coming up. You know, the way I see West Palm Beach a little bit different than maybe a lot of other people. I see a lot of opportunity, economic resurgence, which is what I saw when I moved here from Chicago, the mission statement being of economic resurgence, and I've seen that certainly over the last 10 years. So I'm all in favor of improvement, but right now, with our downtown businesses that desperately need support with all of our programs that we have downtown, bringing in tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people to the green market, to every waterfront shows and so forth. So I'm certainly not in favor of a marina. I don't see how it's really going to help us economically. I don't see how it's going to support our local businesses, and that's pretty much it. I'd be curious to see a rendering of the entertainment center that you're proposing, but I'm of the posture, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And I think we've got something really terrific, and we've got a lot of happy people living here, and for those of you that know me, I've always been a great supporter. I'm not negative. But if you can show me where this is going to be a better solution for what we already have, then, you know, I'd be willing to listen. I don't know. Is that it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Two other cards. Sandy Makovich and Cant Chestnut.
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. I missed most of your little talk. I came in late, but you will give us ample time to address this marina. When you're up there, ready to vote on it, if God himself walked down the aisle, your mind's already made up. Finished, okay? I've got four attorneys sitting up there. You are Harvard graduate, and you didn't know you weren't supposed to vote on this issue except to break a tie? Commissioner Fox has the gratitude of many residents in West Palm Beach for the stand she took. Didn't do her any good, but she stepped up when it was needed. What, three of...Commissioner Ward voted for the other one. She didn't go along with you. The rest of yous had no idea about our sunny and the kickback, I mean, the contribution. Yous didn't know about it. Now, Commissioners, I'm going to address you. Back in the day, Jerry Moyo was the mayor, Claudia McKenna was the city attorney. Something was being discussed, and Commissioner James questioned it. He didn't like the city attorney's response. He suggested that the city commission have their own attorney, money put aside, I think maybe $10,000, so if yous had any questions, you would have an attorney on the commissioner's side. That was James suggesting as a commissioner. Put that into place. If it hasn't been put, yous need your own attorney. This marina thing, you already know you weren't told about the contribution and our sunny and rest of it. James Johnson lied to you constantly. Either outright, direct lied to you, or lied to you with misinformation. Okay? You people are what can stop this land grab. I'm sure yous all read the story I just published. Do you want this to be like Palm Harbor? You don't own the waterfront. We all own the waterfront. Commissioner Lambert, Channel 25 went to you for comment, and you never get back to them. That's the mayor's, he doesn't comment. He goes through his city spokesman, spokeswoman. You're following in his footsteps.
Thank you very much.
Stop it.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Cant Chestnut.
Cant Chestnut, 1546th Street, West Palm Beach. I'm here in reference to the treatment of the homeless community, again. It is unconscionable that it's okay for our police officers to deny a person a glass of water, a bottle of water, a soda, that someone tries to give them in this heat and humidity. These people are out there because they have no place to go. They're not out there because they want to be. You all have a home, you got air conditioning, you don't even have a cooling station. This city doesn't even have a shelter, and it was said by one of the commissioners that they got it good in West Palm Beach. What's good about that? What's good about your officers trying to enforce an ordinance without even knowing what the ordinance consists of? Everything that a person does is not an event, and everybody should not be cited or harassed for helping someone less fortunate. In addition to that, I have a concern about the response time when you send us out to meet with your officials, your representatives, when we make a comment in this meeting, and yet and still, there's no response. Four weeks ago, I was taken outside with Assistant Commiss, I mean, Assistant City Administrator Rodriguez, took my information. Four weeks later, I've heard not a word. It, the buck stops here. It stops with this commission, it stops with the members. I bring my concerns here because you have oversight over every department in this city. So starting at the bottom and working my way up is not an option for me. I'm bringing it to the top. I'm bringing it to the top, and I expect some responses. I don't like the fact that, as a citizen of this city, that we should have to grovel for things that are not, there's no need for it. Why should we have to beg you to let us be kind to someone? That doesn't make sense. You all have options. Some of those people don't have options. I'm going to stand for them any and every chance I get. I'm going to continue to feed them, I'm going to give them water, I'm going to give them anything that I have that they need, and I will always do it within the bounds of your ordinance. But please, make sure your officers know the ordinance before they approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have another card from Ginger Gowing. She did not wish to speak. Her comment is, please do not allow the marina project to go forward. It would dismantle one of the best public amenities in South Florida. Please stop the negotiations. Okay. That is the last card. We will now go to comments from the dais, and we'll begin with President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank you again for the clarification that you provided during your opening comments today, and I do look forward to the workshops and the additional information that we'll be receiving as we continue to move forward as it relates to the marina. There's just been a lot of feedback, and I'd like to just ensure that the public is aware that we're listening and paying attention to everything that they're saying all along the way. I'd also like to know if, in fact, we do have a commissioned attorney, and if that information can be provided to the commissioners moving forward, how we would be able to access that commissioned attorney, and what the process would be for that. In relationship to Mr. Grassford Smith and the recognition that he received, as well as him being the president of the bar, huge congratulations to him. There are so many things that I could say about him, things that you mentioned, Mayor, as well as my own relationship with Grassford, and knowing that he was once a board member for the Sickle Cell Foundation, I believe he was a board member for the Urban League, he was a founding member of Black Village Voice Political Action Committee, and he really cares a lot about the work that he does in the community and a fair and just system. So again, congratulations to Grassford Smith. I would also like to commend the CRA for the amazing job that they did with the, at the Heart and Soul Park with the barbecue brews and blues. It was a great event, and it was a great kickoff to the holiday weekend and the wonderful Fourth on Flagler that we experienced. It's just wonderful to see that starting, and again, what I believe to be the heart and soul of West Palm Beach. There is a press conference on Thursday that I was able to attend along with the mayor and Commissioner Fox. It was a wonderful press conference. I'm sure the mayor will elaborate on the grant and the funding that was received to go into our city. The West Palm Beach Mini Market on Clematis by night being extended Thursdays through the end of the month is huge. Go Green Market, go Mini Market. And congratulations to Nicole Henry for receiving Best Traditional Jazz Soul Train Award, and she can be heard at the Soul in the City Jazz Experience at the Lake Pavilion on July 19 from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. That concludes my commission comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mayor, and I too want to congratulate Grassford. I got to know him through the Emerging Leaders on Economic Council, and it's nice to see someone else that I kind of grew up starting in my career, my professional career, getting so many accolades and involved in so many ways, and almost makes me feel like, wow, I'm not doing enough, just looking at how many things that that man does, so congratulations to him. And I am sorry I missed the festivities. I was out of town, but looking at my social media, I clearly missed a good time at Heart and Soul and on Flagler. And I also want to thank the mayor for bringing up the marinas discussion, because I don't open my email without seeing multiple emails from somebody discussing it, asking for a motion to halt things, and having community involvement prior to negotiation, and I wanted to address that because, to me, I think it is missing the point on the discussion at that special meeting and the clarification that was made multiple times, that this wasn't final, and I want to make that distinction different than what the mayor said. A contract negotiation doesn't have to go to sign, to signature, and I want to be clear on that. My decision is not made for marina or no marina. I'd like to know more information. We are in a vacuum, and I think that a lot of people don't understand that process and the information that we are given and allowed to see, and so I am really hoping that we have a lot of community engagement, not just listening, but engaging and understanding what they're really asking for, what we're possibly seeing, the benefits of some of the not-for-profits that they want to partner with to make sure our waterfront is, you know, top-notch. But again, it's not final, and I think that was repeated multiple times at the meeting, that we can terminate this and not move forward. That's what a negotiation is, and I don't know how many deals that I've dealt with personally where that has happened at the last minute. So I can only speak for myself, and that I took that to heart, and I will continue to take that to heart. My decision is not made because it isn't final. So again, that's, I'm just speaking for me as one of your commissioners. Onto just some general information. There is, we heard last time that there was that My Safe Florida Homes program, and I wanted to just reiterate that. It's available to select townhomes and single-family homeowners, providing free-of-charge home hurricane inspections starting July 1. Other benefits to the program include eligibility to apply for a matching grant, where every $1 you provide, the state will provide two toward the actual cost of authorized mitigation projects, no state sales tax on retail purchases, on impact-resistant doors, impact-resistant garage doors, and impact windows from July 1 through June 30, 2024, and then potential low, lower home insurance premiums because of that. On Wednesday, we have Meet the Chief in the North End at 6:30 at Gaines Park in the Community Room. This Saturday, at Osprey Park, we have a cleanup from 8 to 11. Osprey Park is located on Flagler up in the North End in the Northwood Harbor neighborhood. And we also have National Night Out. Residents can join the city's Police Department and Fire Department on August 1 from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for National Night Out. It's an annual, it's an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. And I think that that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to take a moment to address our residents concerning the proposed marina. First, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for providing those comments and clarification of the city's intention. I think that is important. I have heard from a number of downtown residents. And although it may have appeared that we acted prematurely in engaging in a selection process prior to hearing from the community and fully vetting this concept, I think the mayor in his remarks indicated that we were very early in this process, and I agree with that. And we should have ample opportunity to fully vet this project and hear from our residents. I pledge to you that my mind, and I, and I promise you, my mind is not made up on this issue. I'm going to keep an open mind when we vet this process and we, we vet this project to determine whether a marina that's being proposed is in the best interest of the citizens and the residents and businesses here in West Palm Beach. And, you know, we may actually also benefit from having some sort of, of charrette at the site where there's some depictions and graphics modeling of the concept. I know that I personally would benefit from a site visit. And, and as a visual person myself, I really would like to see some visualizations of this concept so I can get a, a handle on, on what we're talking about here. And I think the public may, that may be helpful for our residents as well. Like my colleagues here, I'd like to congratulate Grassford Smith on his, the presidency of the Palm Beach County Bar Association. As a member of the Florida Bar, I understand the importance of voluntary bar associations and all that they do for the residents of, of Palm Beach County and for promoting our legal system and helping people guide, helping our residents, you know, through the legal system when they need it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Ms. Makovich, I just wanted to clarify. If you go to the online article that you referenced from Channel twenty-five, the reporter has updated her article as her communications did not reach me. And I have since communicated with her. Regarding the marina and public comment, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues and everything that they have mentioned here is that, we mentioned it many times during that meeting, is that it is our intent to, to receive public input and public comment and to ensure that whatever is done on the waterfront is for public benefit. And so I do look forward to those future meetings and opportunity to hear from our residents and to explore this idea further. And, you know, it's, it's interesting that the marina idea, the use of public space is, is so prevalent right now and that we honored our parks at the beginning of this meeting because I think that our, our parks and our outdoor space is, is so valuable to our city. And I would just encourage everybody since July is Parks and Recreation Month in the city to go and explore maybe a new park that you're not familiar with. I will share with you that one of my family's favorite park is Phipps Park. And if you haven't had the chance to walk that park, it's beautiful. Has some, what I consider some of our most gorgeous trees in West Palm Beach. I've seen young couples having a date night picnic under these trees, yoga in the park, a free yoga in the park on the weekends. I've seen, you may know that there's ball fields at this park. And so while the kids might be at practice, I've seen parents using the exercise facilities and walking the park. It reminds me of my own single mom who would go to the park and utilize those facilities while I was at ball practice. It's, it's just a, a great benefit that our city offers. And I just encourage us to, to continue to support our parks. And then I know it has been mentioned before, but I wanted to also mention the Mini Green Market because I've recently had some family in town, and they asked about the Green Market. And I said, oh, well, it closes at a certain time of year, and, and they were really saddened by that. And then I heard the announcement that we have the Mini Green Markets, and it's really great. So I would encourage those of you who haven't had a chance to go to Clematis by night for the Mini Green Markets. Thank you so much to our Parks and Rec staff for all the hard work that you do all year. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for another successful Fourth on Flagler Independence Day celebration this year, mark thirty-fifth anniversary of the successful flagship event. We had a record attendance of sixty-five thousand residents and visitors. And our downtown waterfront came alive, and it was great to see the musi- hear the musics, hear the entertainment, and see a spectacular fireworks display. And due to popular demand, Commissioner Lambert, the city of West Palm Beach has extended the mini at Clematis by night through August. So come out to Clematis by night. You can enjoy dozens of beloved vendors and exciting newcomers at the mini pop-up Green Market. And it's every Thursday from six to nine during Clematis by night. You could go to the Clematis by night webpage, which could be reached through the city's official webpage, and see a list of participating vendors. And I'm sorry that I missed the Heart and Soul event. I was, I was out of, out of town. Exciting new event that's coming up is Soul in the City, which is a jazz series which will bring soulful sounds to downtown West Palm Beach. And that'll take place every Thursday, Wednesday, from seven to nine through September. This exciting event will transform beautiful downtown West Palm Beach into a haven for jazz enthusiasts and cultural aficionados. Immerse yourself in the soulful melodies of premier jazz artists at the Soul in the City Jazz Experience, which will be inside the Lake Pavilion at one oh one South Flagler Drive, located in the heart of downtown. This unique venue provides an intimate and engaging atmosphere. It will allow attendees to enjoy the music and ambiance of the event while looking at stunning views and intracoastal. Tickets for the Soul in the City Jazz Experience are ten dollars per person. Early reservations are encouraged, as seating is limited. The city of West Palm Beach and the Palm Beach County Community Services Department, Ryan White HIV AIDS Program, are co-hosting a free event, Breaking the Silence: A Conversation on Overcoming HIV Stigma, on Thursday, July twentieth, at the Lake Pavilion from seven to nine P.M. Special guest, Idia Broadbent, an award-winning humanitarian and HIV AIDS activist, will be sharing her journey as someone living with HIV and how others can overcome the stigma often associated with it. And then last, but certainly not least, I'm very pleased to share that the city of West Palm Beach was recently awarded a U.S. Department of Transportation RACE Grant. The eight-point-one-million-dollar federal grant was the largest of four grants in South Florida. The city will add about two million dollars in matching funds to bring the total for the projects to ten-point-two million. The goal is to make major and minor improvements to four underserved neighborhoods and areas. The funding will allow us to create a robust multimodal network for the Roosevelt Estates, Twin Lakes, and Carver neighborhoods. It will provide critical connectivity, mobility, and access to schools, community centers, parks, trails, and access to downtown West Palm Beach job centers. It's a remarkable opportunity to propel some of West Palm Beach's historically black neighborhoods forward in our mission to enhance infrastructure and create a more resilient and equitable city. The grant will help us with the implementation of connected pedestrian and bike facilities, traffic calming measures, upgraded stormwater structures, and enhancements to key corridors, and help us create a safer and more connected West Palm Beach. The RACE Grant is a catalyst for transformation. We are grateful for this tremendous support. Thanks again to Congresswoman Lois Frankel for her assistance with us getting that grant. With every step we take, we are shaping a West Palm Beach that thrives, excels, and sets the stage for generations to come, indeed, a community of opportunity for all. So that's all I have. Thank you. God bless you. God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. Good night, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.